Mr. Lee Haslam.
Councilmember Wilcox.
President.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Summer though.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Sweetie.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Present.
All present persons in the forum.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States, one nation, under our laws. Just for office for all. Agenda approval.
So.
To move. It's the move of Mr. Barr.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask for a change, slight change, right after we go back to open session. There may be a resolution for council. I ask that be heard, please.
Okay, Mr. Barr, could you use my mic, please?
Yes. Yep. Right after we come back from closed session, at the open session, I have proposed resolution that will, I'd like to present depending on the happenstance of the closed session.
All right, thank you. Mr. Collins, you have got two agenda. Any other distractions or additions? Do you not have a favor?
I have.
So. The agenda is approved and. That's amended. Okay, we'll now move into closed session.
Mayor, there needs to be a motion and second followed by a rule called.
I move when we go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, our MCO 152680, exciting R. D. Corp. versus D. S. Lanning, as well as for discussion, negotiation of collective.
This is the move that Senator Devin Paul.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Summer though.
Yeah.
Mayor Richardson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweetie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
You're returning before the session at six oh eight.
Thank you.
We're now with you.
All right, I would like to move back into open session for.
Do you listen to one of the favors?
All right.
And we will have a five minute piece there.
Oh.
I do think. At their time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We are good. Pretty good. I said. I said that this is. Yes. I feel like that will, that will. Yeah.
All right. We will move back in session. And. We have a resolution added. That we would like to. Let's see. Let's start with the resolution and then we'll go to public comment. I believe you had a resolution. Also. Resolution number 2022, Dutch 2037A. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that whereas Ypsilanti are a theater corporation. These are crucial girls of planning, limited incorporation and international movement, commonly known as D. S. L. operates the adult regulated business in the city of Ypsilanti, thereafter city, and whereas the city was reviewing the non-conforming status of D. S. L. adults regulated business, when D. S. L. brought suit against the city of Ypsilanti, city of Ypsilanti Commission, Andy Ma as an individual, Joe Myers as an individual in federal district court, and whereas the city brought suit against D. S. L. in Washington County Circuit Court, and whereas the parties have agreed on settlement in both the federal district court and Washington County Circuit Court action, and all claims set forth in the attached settlement agreement. Now, therefore, the city council approves the settlement and authorizes the mayor's to be charged with settlement agreement for, and on behalf of the city of Ypsilanti, authorizes the city attorney to take all necessary steps to implement the settlement agreement. So. The move is forwarded. Any questions? The.
Councilmember. Councilmember Summer though.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
No.
Councilmember Sweetie.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries a six yes one no.
All right, thank you. Oh, we are now open for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Annette Kopic. I'm a detective with the City of Ypsilanti Police Department. I'm a 28-year veteran that I've been with the department. I've been in the detective bureau the last 14 or 15 years, and earlier this year, I had no choice but to meet with city manager, Ms. Francis, regarding the operation of the detective bureau. Under the former chief, De Juisty, and Lieutenant Yucus, who is now serving as interim. The detective bureau has been overworked with no help for years. I showed, I tried to show my command officers a list of everything that is, that we are working on. They didn't want to see it. I met with Ms. Francis. She got me another detective in July. So the firstly, first day in July, when Detective Donnelly was assigned to the detective bureau, the chief and the interim chief both pulled them in the office and said, "You work for us. You don't work for them," meaning myself and Detective Lewandowski. The second day, the interim chief pulled Donnelly in, Detective Donnelly, and asked what he was working on, took some of his cases, and says, "Don't forget who you work for. You work for us, not them." Then prior to, to the Tony De Juisty leaving, Lieutenant Yucus, who's the interim now, so that he is going to make the department better by stop ordering officers for rope tow positions, and that because we need to keep people here, the officers are burned out because we're so short-staffed. Officer Donnelly, Detective Donnelly, pointed out that there's a posting for a sergeant, and that they're ordered two officers to work the sergeant's position. That occurred on two openings this past weekend, on 10:15 and 10:16, Officer Donnelly went in and asked interim chief Yucus what these, this posting was for, and he said, "Oh, well, I, why are you posting for a sergeant's position and ordering officers?" Lieutenant Yucus told him that he was, been corresponding with the city manager, and that he really can't order a command officer for that position. The next day, I asked the interim chief the reason that he posted this, and he told me that there were only two officers on the shift. I called Lieutenant Egenberger, who posted the actual posting, and he told me that Lieutenant Yucus told him to post it for Sergeant Wist. And that's why he ordered two officers and diverted me back to go talk to the chief, the interim chief. So I consulted with our POAM rep, because this is a blatant contract violation. And I showed the ruling to the interim chief, and he says, "I told him it's a contract violation. You can't do this. Just change it." He refused, and I told him we're gonna have to file a grievance, and then he says, "Oh, really? Really? You want to do this? Because if you do this, you're not gonna like what I'm gonna do next." I said, "What is that?" He says, "Well, I'm gonna pull out the detectives. So you're gonna leave me in my, in, by myself." There are so many cases that Detective Lewandowski are knee-deep in homicide cases. One is the one that occurred in January. Oh, wow. Tell this family here why can't, why we can't have detectives.
Mr. Collins, that's three, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, paper two minutes.
Thank you.
That'd be a council to have a vote on that.
Speaker, wait.
Could we have a voice vote to extend your time for two minutes?
Would be a motion and second.
I'm going to extend.
Just some of the major cases we have upcoming within the next week and months. I have a father who's sleeping with his eight-year-old daughter. I have a mother trafficking her seven-year-old daughter. I have the family here of Gavin, who was stabbed to death in Penn Park. There, this prelim is coming up on Thursday. We have more information that there are other suspects. That needs to be investigated immediately. I have the Bud and Joe's homicide, Tavante Davis. We have new information that came up on that. The kidnapping, the autistic girl that got kidnapped repeatedly raped and dumped. I have more work to do on that. The Gregory Fairley homicide, Omari Johnson, Arshon Evans. It's just, it's concerning to me. You cannot cut down the DB. This is compromising the integrity of our department and victimizing these victims all over again. Took an oath to protect and serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, after hearing that, really put some things in perspective. What I'm here for tonight is important, but maybe not as important as that. I'm here about the discussion regarding the negotiations for the DDA and the tax increment financing, and trying to do something with the Frog Island lot. I would just like to say, if we can get this resolution into council, get a group of people to sit down and discuss it. We've been working on parking in Depot Town since 2018. It was one of the city's goals to have something done to that lot. And, you know, I'm hearing all these rumors, "Well, we, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that." No, we can't do it that way. That's not what getting the resolution through council is. It's about getting it through so we can get a group of people that can sit down and figure out how we can work together to make this work. The DDA, you know, in Depot Town, we're willing to put skin in the game and get money to try to help fix that lot. We're, we're not coming to with any demands. We're just saying, "Let's sit down and do it as benefit for not only Depot Town, but the city, and let's come together and work together for the common good and do something good instead of, like, fighting each other." We, we have the possibility to make this happen. So I'd like you to be open-minded, and let us get a group that can sit down and hammer through a negotiation of how we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rich. Andy French.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Andy French. I'm with Aubrey's Pizzeria and Grill, and I'm here to talk about the same issue Sally spoke about with the parking situation in Depot Town. I'm not sure how many people on council were here in 2018, when the DDA and the city of Ypsilanti combined to commission a parking study report. If you haven't seen it or read it, it would be beneficial to do so. It recognized some significant problems within all three of our business districts, with Depot Town being the worst. Depot Town has a 256-spot parking deficit that's existed for a long time. We have a parking lot in Frog Island that has at least 30 years of deferred maintenance. That is now, it's not ADA accessible. It's been allowed to basically go to ruin with no plans to repair it. And that's kind of what began these, these discussions and these conversations, that the city, for a number of reasons, it's not a priority. There are other things that are more important at the city level, and the DDA possibly has a way to address this. So to Sally's point, I'm asking that the council approve the ability for the two groups to come together and talk and, and find a solution to this. Continuing allowing our, our infrastructure to deteriorate doesn't benefit our citizens, doesn't benefit the district, and Mayor, you and I have talked in the past about, our downtown district serves not just Ypsilanti. And when we talk about parking, I know there's different opinions on how people feel about cars, but Depot Town, downtown, West Cross Street, we drive people, we are the downtown of business district for not just the city of Ypsilanti, but city of, or excuse me, Ypsilanti Township, the east side of Ann Arbor, Canton. We are a hub for a regional group of people that are coming in, supporting our businesses, and we need the infrastructure and the investment to continue to support that business. Thank you.
Thank you. Giddy Carney, one. Melanie Carney.
Hello. Can everyone hear me? Hi, my name is Melanie Carney. I'm here on behalf of my son and every other victim of crime. My son Gavin Carney was 28 years old. He was a disabled adult, but he was a lot of my life. He had a traumatic brain injury his freshman year of college that made him disabled. He left my house on January 15th with whom I thought was a reliable, trusted friend for him to go out and, because he wanted to feel normal, and go hang out with a friend, because he spent 99% of his time at home with me or at doctor's offices. I didn't know it was the last day of him be able to see my son smile, be able to love him, see his face, hear his voice, or hug him. They decided to plot and plan and lure my son so they could rob and kill him and take my Cadillac truck. And his belongings that they were coveting. On January 15th is when he left my house, that's the day his life ended, and the day mine did too. Of this year. I am going through open murder investigation, where Detective Annette and Detective Lou are the detectives that are trying to find the perpetrators who murdered my son. They have worked diligently and got two people in custody right now, but there's four more people that they know are involved, and they are working on the evidence and trying to gather it and process it. I have learned through this journey that I've been walking through, this living nightmare, that when you pull one string, that string leads you to another clue, to another person, to another thing they have to track down. And to find out that this administration wants to take all of the homicide detectives that are currently working on my son's case, Detective Lou, away, and the other people in that department, only leave Detective Annette to be the only homicide detective that is there. How does that give my son and other people who have lost their lives any type of justice? To leave it on the shoulders of one woman, for her to be able to go and pull those strings and track down those clues and process that evidence and make up and type up those type of warrants to be able to give you, she's one person. So you slow down the due diligence and the due process that my son deserves to get justice, as well as the people who are sitting in jail, who are trying to go through it themselves. They're supposed to have a speedy trial. How did you have a speedy trial when you only have one person being able to work the case and do the evidence? So I'm gonna leave you with this. I want you to imagine if it's your son, your daughter, your grandson, your nephew, your niece, your husband, your wife, your loved ones. Would you think only having one homicide detective be the equivalent, equivalent to the oath that you took to protect and serve the community you in? I don't think you would. I beseech you to rethink this and allow those homicide detectives to stay working on the cases that they're on, so the families of the victims have closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Those who are all that are on the list, there anyone else who would like to speak to council?
I'd love to talk. If my name is not on the list, please consider my question.
Okay, I will call on you. I called on Mr. Chief, without you, I'll call on you, yes.
All right.
Lee Tewson, resident of the city of Ypsilanti, vice president of the NAACP. I'm not surprised tonight that the acting chief is not here, and that shows us that he's not interested in what happens in the city of Ypsilanti. I'm sure he knew about this combined meeting. He should have been here. Thank you, Chief Hobbs, for being present. I've known Annette Kopic for 28 years, and she has always been an upstanding woman and an upstanding cop. She was born to be a police officer. I was in court today on a hearing of an 11-year-old girl that was raped repeatedly, thrown into bushes like a dog, and we found out today was the only officer, only detective working that case. De Juisty didn't work it. Yucus didn't work it. None of the lieutenants didn't work it. None of us, Sarge didn't work it. Just Annette Kopic. If it wasn't for Annette Kopic, Ypsilanti Police Department would go unglued. She is the glue that keeps that department going. Now, I don't like to hear women cry. You men like to hear women cry? You shouldn't, because you got moms. When I see Detective Kopic cry, it makes me mad. Yeah, it makes me mad, but I strike not. When I see my sister cry concerning her son, it makes me mad, but I strike not. But it makes me double mad when you got a lieutenant that's retaliating against a detective sergeant, that's what she is, who has made the Ypsilanti Police Department shy. He is retaliating against her, and that's not all. They've been retaliating against her for a long time. Not just now, but for a long time. You should hear some of the comments. You should hear some of the conversations that they talk about her on the radio. I'm lecturing, inclined, I can do what I want to do with a two-way radio. Anything I want to do with it, and I hear the conversation. It's time for you guys to give her, council and the city management, it's time for you all to give her what she needs to continue doing the perfect work that she is doing for the city of Ypsilanti. We do not need Yucus as no chief. That's a piece of the cloth that has gone. We do not need that. And, Speaker, I'll be back. I'm too legit to quit.
Mr. Rajabi.
My name is Reza Rajabi. I'm a Middle Eastern American, and the city of Ypsilanti for the last six years. I'm not talking to the council. For the last six years, I have talked to you, and you have done nothing for me.
Mr. Rajabi, the comments are to be directed to council.
I am.
And not directed to the audience. Please.
My, my talking tonight is directed at the audience. For six years, you have not listened to me. When I say the city of Ypsilanti is discriminating against me, you said at one of the meetings, "I believe Mr. Rajabi is being discriminated against because of his accent." You think Islamophobia is a joke in this country? You think only blacks are being discriminated against? I've been discriminated against by Mr. Myers for six years, and you have done nothing about it. Nothing. Zero. None of it. Zero. But when a black firefighter says, "I didn't get the fire chief position because I'm black," what did you do? What did you do? You came to the meeting, you said, "Tonight, I'm dressed all in black to contest or to whatever the fact that this fellow did not get the position of fire chief." And you said, "For 18 years, I have been a city council member, and I have never used the race car, but for the first time, I'm gonna do it tonight." Miss Richardson, do you have a credit card up in your sleeve to use for me? For six years, I have, you see me? You see how I'm dressed? This is how I go to bed. Because in order to pay my goddamn property taxes, I have to save on, on, on heat. One day, my refrigerator was not working. Somebody came and said, "You know that everything in your refrigerator is frozen because your house is so cold?" This is, this is what I'm dealing with. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Reza Rajabi. My phone number is 734-219-1379. If you can help me, please do so. I sent, I talked to 27 attorneys. I said, "I'm willing to give you as many checks as you, we want, for $1,000 a check that you can cash every month, because I don't have the lump sum money to pay." You know what the answer was? Do you have thousands and thousands of dollars? I said, "No, what are you talking about?" The city, he said, he says, "This is a free advice, Mr. Rajabi. The city will spend as much money as they want, because they're not spending their money. They're spending your money, your money, your money, your money, my money. They don't want to lose a case." On August 3rd, I called Mr. Myers. I said, "When are you going to get here an appointment for the inspector?" He said, "Not until mid-September. Mr. Myers, mid-October has passed. I don't have a certificate of occupancy." On the day after Labor Day weekend, I went to Mr. Barr. My God, you guys are killing me. Why do I? Barr. My God, you guys are killing me. Why do I live in this goddamn city? Why? Mr. Barr said, bring me the most recent certificate of occupancy. And I did it right away. Right away. Mr. Barr, what did you do about it? Nothing. Nothing. I, I wrote a letter to Mr. Barr and I said, the house next door to mine does not have a rail to the basement. And it has had certificates of occupancy for forty years, but they are not issuing certificates of occupancy. And he says, when the police officer is giving somebody a speeding ticket, he cannot say, look at all these cars that are speeding. Why are you giving me a ticket but not that? Mr. Barr, for God's sake, we are not talking about a speeding car. We are talking about a stationary freaking house right next to my house. When are you going to see justice done to me about me? When? When, how many more years I'm going to live in that cold, cold, cold house? Why should, I, I called the city and I said, you know what? I don't want water. Shut off the water because I don't have the money to pay my utilities. The answer, if we shut off the water to your property, we have to report you to the city and the city is going to condemn your house. And you're going to become homeless. So I come to the city and I said, if you become, if, if you, if you. If you shut down my house and I become homeless, what do you want me to do? Do you want to come to live with you? And your wife? And the city manager says, oh, you mean, the city manager says, oh, you mean me and my husband? Come on, people. When I go to the city to conduct my business, I'm going to the city to conduct my business. I don't care about the. Sexual orientation of your city manager that he's gay. I don't care. Who is on the top, who is on the bottom, in a bedroom is not a mother.
Your time is up. Thank you for coming and speaking with us.
I want you to call me tomorrow. I want you to call me tomorrow. You have promised so many times to call me and you never did. You never did. It is on the record. When are you going to issue me a certificate of occupancy? When are you, I want to hear it now. Thank you. Have a nice day. And next time, inform people that the meeting is going to be somewhere else. I don't have a car. I went all the way to the city hall on my bike and I got all wet. I don't have a computer.
I'm sorry, but this is our time to have a meeting.
I want you to call me, Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Rajabi, I did call you. I talked with you on several occasions. And I gave you a number to call to get some assistance where you could have gotten your. Your, what you, the certificate that you needed. But however, when you called, you told them you didn't want the help that they could give you. I couldn't do anything else. Thank you very much. I will give you a call.
The number you gave me was, 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 was for Mr. Croft and Mr. Croft. There is nothing I can do for you. Yes, Mr. Croft said, there's nothing I can do for you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am.
Would you give us your name, please?
My, my name is Ronald Rice. I'm, I'm an attorney in good standing with the State Bureau of Michigan. I have approximately. I have approximately forty years of law enforcement. Representing the city of Detroit, representing. The Department of Justice. I also taught as an adjunct professor at the U of D Law School. I became aware of this whole situation through my cousin Melanie Gardner. And she was, she was telling me what was happening here in Ipsilanti. And it's my understanding that. Some officers, detectives and like have been taken away from her son's case. That's Gavin Kearney. One of the biggest things in law in the state of Michigan. And in fact, this country is whether or not due process has been served. Now, and that it is timely due process. If you don't have enough. Detectives working and prosecutors working the case. The likelihood is that the outcome of the case may be challenged. And if it's challenged, then. Ipsilanti administration will be challenged as well. It seems to me, and I know that you as council people have authority to say. What is going to be spent in whichever department there is. But you must be mindful that whatever decision you make may impact. What your responsibilities and duties are. We. I, I came away thinking that at the very least, you have cases that are in process. That require completion and timely completion. Due process is one of the most important things that you have to deal with. Not only the defendants. Have due, due process. You understand what that means? And I would assume that whatever decision you make. You would lead in place officers and detectives and those, those people who can investigate. To give, to give even the defendants their own due process. And to assuage whatever anxiety the family of the victim has. And I appreciate you. Consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. I see no hand. We will close.
Is there, if there's anyone attending virtually that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No one raised their hand. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. We will close public comments. The consent agenda.
Resolved by the council, the city of Ipsilanti, the following items be approved. One, Resolution number twenty-two dash two three eight, approving the minutes of the October fourth, twenty-two, City Council meeting. Two, Resolution number twenty-two dash two three nine, approving the acceptance of parcel A from the Park Grove Foundation. Housing Association Limited Partnership and Park Grove City, and I make this name from Housing Association Limited Partnership. Three, Resolution number twenty-two dash two four zero, visiting director of public services, Biden Weston. As the single street administrator of the city of Ipsilanti, I submit.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerbell?
Yes.
Motion carries next.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank the planning commission for meeting with us tonight. Doesn't often, doesn't often that they get to meet with other commissions, but we're happy that you have here tonight. And we're glad that we get to come back, but they regret it, so. Looking forward to our discussion. Okay, Revolution twenty-two dash two forty-one.
The version twenty-two dash two four one, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti, whereas the board of department agreed. With the city and the American State County. Employed A F S C N, inspired in two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas on March the seventh, twenty-two. A F S C M E U D employees voted and switched their bargaining union to technical professional ops workers of Michigan, T P O A M. And whereas the city and the T P O A M have been engaged in contract negotiations and reached agreement. On new collective bargaining agreement to determine, commencing on July first, twenty-twenty-two, and terminating on July, June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Whereas the T P O A M employee union has voted and successfully ratified the new contract. And the city desires to approve the new contract presented, now therefore be resolved by the city of Ipsilanti. City Council does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ipsilanti and T P O A M. For the term commencing on July first, twenty-twenty-two, and terminating on July, June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. As presented and authorized, the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city after approval by the city attorney. As a form, as a move.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Comments? Saying, Mr. Lee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerbell?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries next.
Resolution twenty-two dash two four two, approving the agreement with Washington County to be moved to lay.
Resolution number two zero two two dash two four two, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti. Whereas the city of Ipsilanti has been awarded fifty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one community development block grant. Funding by Washington County to Star Side of Grants within the city. And whereas in order to move forward with the project, the city of Ipsilanti must enter into an agreement with Washington County. For the subaward of community development block grant funds, C D E G. And whereas the city of Ipsilanti intends to complete the grant before the end of the fiscal year. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Ipsilanti, the city council approves the agreement between Washington County and the city of Ipsilanti. For subaward of federal financial assistance and authorizes the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on the city's behalf. The agreement shall be subject to review by the city attorney, I submit.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, discussion? I see no hand. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Definitely.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerbell?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
The sixty yes and one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution twenty, number twenty-two, two four three, approving the agreement, I'm sorry. Resolution twenty-two, two four four, awarding the partnership project, the facility improvement at C D E G grant. Rapidly. So there's two, Washington County. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Approving two four three, approving the agreement between Washington County and the city of Ipsilanti for. Federal finance assistance.
Resolution number two zero two two dash two four three, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti. Whereas the city of Ipsilanti has been awarded ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars in the past year of community development block grant funding by Washington County. To improve the accessibility of Park Ridge Park. And whereas in order to move forward with the project, the city of Ipsilanti must enter into an agreement with Washington County. For the subaward of community development block grant funds, C D E G. And whereas the city of Ipsilanti intends to complete the ramp after much prior to the end of the fiscal year. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Ipsilanti, the city council, approves the agreement between Washington County and the city of Ipsilanti. For a subaward of federal financial assistance authorized by the mayor, clerk, signing the agreement on the city's behalf. This agreement shall be subject to review by the city attorney.
It's been moved and supported. And I see Mr. West, let him like, if you have something for.
I'm just here for questions.
Is there any questions or comments? On the resolution, just with. Oh, I do, I have one. Which ramp are the?
So this agreement is for the Park Ridge Park Accessibility Project, so to create a ramp on the western edge of Park Ridge Park. Towards the community center. So there's currently a straight asphalt path. This would be to construct a switchback concrete path running next to that for people who. Have mobility disabilities and need that more level ADA compliant surface. This will also fund some improvements to the concrete floor in the Park Ridge Pavilion as well. So that's currently in pretty rough shape, so.
Okay, it's the ramp that's been here for a little while.
Right.
Okay.
They were bid together, so the ramps project that the previous sub-agreement was for. And this Park Ridge Accessibility Project will bid together to help get us better pricing.
Okay, thank you. Alright, there are no questions or comments from the council? Mr. Lake, would you call the roll?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerbell?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries next.
Thank you. And now we have twenty-two, last two four four.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two four four, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti. Whereas funding has been programmed in Washington County, community development block grant program for the construction of sidewalk ramps and upgrading. Accessibility in Park Ridge Park in the city of Ipsilanti. And whereas the city of Ipsilanti has solicited steel base for the project. And whereas GM and Zon's construction is low certified better and is being recommended by the city of Ipsilanti to build this project. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Ipsilanti award the park bridge park accessibility improvements in C D E G grant okay, contract. GM and Zon's construction for the bed home, equipment and seventy-four thousand hundred dollars. And that the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to sign this contract subject to appeal by the city attorney and change the subject to review by the city manager. To facilitate the completion of this work and I submit support.
It's been moved and supported. Any, this, any questions for Ms. West or if she's still there? The comment. Okay, saying now would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerbell?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries next.
Um, and now again, I welcome the planning commission to be with us. And I've been looking forward to this discussion for some time and. I believe the planning commission has, we have to be with the. Okay, here's the president, will have, please, go ahead.
Well, I think this all sort of, this all stems from the latest retail marijuana facility. It seemed to me during that planning meeting that it was. So few and a few officers feel on the same page regarding the child development establishment. And whether or not the city would be creating more diverse uses in our retail landscape. For just. For the public standing, every applicant had their own. And so this meeting is to help us all get on the same page. We have since instituted a moratorium on retail establishments pending this discussion and whatever results from it. So that we have time to discuss together and figure out.
Thank you. Someone from the planning commission wants to start.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of notes on that July meeting that just came up before discussion. Several members of the planning commission were following any guidance that existed.
Several members of the planning commission were following any of the guidance that existed. And they go forth with regarding the maximum of the facilities that were bought in the city for a long time. I don't know if it means that this or that thing, because obviously change that they're now just a maximum. And so planning commission, I think, felt, I think about where, where we landed with authority we have to reflect on the decisions on the maximum number of facilities. We're looking at conflicting, ignorant uses in the master plan that punches the land use and approving specific applications for individual retail facilities, but they haven't had enough of the conversation yet of what that looks like in terms of maximum number of facilities across the area.
Anyone else? Mr. Hallingfield?
Yes, I was, I don't know, can you? At that, that meeting, uh, to that particular applicant, that, that application had been placed from anywhere else other than where it is currently located under that vote for. My problem that I have personally is that, of course, you know, they can tell me the perfect site plan, we all require this, but we not only owe our obligation to, to that part of the documents that the city, you know, has set forth that, you know, that we require, but also part of the problem that I have is that we also owe a responsibility to the community, just because we can grant five thousand licenses or approvals for different sites, doesn't mean that we should do it, and so, as one of the longest standing commissioner, planning commissioner, that I cannot honestly vote for another marijuana facility because it's, it's, it's turning Lanning into weed city, you know, and I don't want that kind of nickname for my city. I've lived in the same neighborhood, same house personally all my life, and the, the, the very first one on Harrow Street, I opposed it, but it's there, okay, and I respect it, the, the guidance that was given, and, and I vote for extension and all that because, you know, we were set in, in a situation where, you know, where we can't tell them, well, no, you can't build a bike, and we had, if, if we wanted to build a building. So, all I'm saying is that there needs to be understanding where just because they meet all the proper requirements, do we still have a standing to say no, other than what's best for the community? So that is, that, I, I think part of that sparked the conversation that we had with that last week, is because I can't in due conscience vote to have another, it's just like, you know, we, we're not gonna have that many liquor stores, we're not gonna have that many, you know, other type of facilities in the neighborhood, you know, you get to a certain point, there's enough, and, and I'm okay with it, well, not really, but I'm okay with the, the current level that we have, but my, my thinking is that, as opposed to saying no, we, what we do is as one leaves, replace it with another one as opposed to just keep filling the city up with these facilities. And, and I'm not anti-whatever, you know, I understand people need whatever, you know, medicinal, uh, medicine that, you know, that they need, I'm fine with that, I don't have a problem with that, I say, that, that just, I'm, I'm just saying enough is enough, you know, and I, I don't want that nickname, you know, for that, you know, just like I don't want, you know, Lanning to be known as murder city, I don't want Lanning to be known any negative kind of face, you know, you know, we don't, we don't say Lanning is alcoholic city, you know, or whatever, you know, I just, I just need a clear understanding, am I justified? Or am I wrong for voting another up and down, because I think enough is enough, that's where it clears it, I mean, perfectly.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barr, would you like to respond in a moment? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Hallfield, I think you make an excellent point as to what is the power and the function of the city planning commission? And look at that, you have to look at, what is your role? And what, what, when you make a decision, what you have to take into account for that decision? Let me start out with the idea that cities by state law have the power to pass zoning ordinances. And let me first of all say that generally the rule is, the legal rule is, if you own a piece of property, you can do anything that you want with it, as long as it doesn't hurt your neighbor, that's the general rule. But the state has given cities and townships and so on the power to pass zoning ordinances, so the city can say, well, that's all well and good, but we think that for the benefit of the whole city, this area should be where we have housing, and this area should be where we have business, and this area is where we should have manufacturing. And so the city, when they pass the zoning ordinance, they determine where you can have a certain business. And the rule is that if you want to have a business and you fit into that category, you have the right under the idea that you have the right to use your business to what you want to use it for, if you fit into that category, then you have the right to do that. And so when, when a business comes to the planning commission legally, if they fit all of the, if they fit all the requirements, there's no stone left unturned, then legally they would have the right to do that. But if you have a situation where you're making the decision on a closed question, it's not clear, then you have to make the decision based on the facts and the things that are presented to you, to your best judgment. Does that, does that offer my, my...
Last two words, Mike, like, the last two words you said, that's just...
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone from council, uh, Ms. Summerbell?
Just want to require Joe, I think part of the reason why we're back here, before when we have a cap, we can go through the river process, and that process on medical, opened the city out litigation. So when we decided to merge the two chapters, wrapping in, in medical, we eliminated the, the cap and decided to go just based on zoning to prevent future litigation. At the time, I actually thought that the buffers were too small, but that pointed out when we had a bunch of non-people want to use it, which I was okay with, actually. People would still be able to sell like their business to another person, that they would relocate. So I don't know if you have any, like, feedback, Joe?
Here. Okay, so, as far as that, and where it is on all the marijuana conversations, when you make a building a non-conforming use, or make a business a non-conforming use, that does not meet the state M R A requirements, so all the marijuana facilities have to be a conforming use? And so that's why we chose to, to make the buffers what we could, with giving to a thousand people, so what Mr. Barr has, so a thousand people max, we want to make sure all of these facilities could be created. I also have to get another memo that might help this discussion a little bit, I'm sorry, it was not a packet, we're pretty short staffed in the office, as everyone probably knows, Andy Ammott, actually, the planner's left. Uh, we're hoping to have anyone hired, but I'm passing around a memo for everyone. They put the original buffer map on, so what was added, and in that app, there was potential for, in the worst case, there are six new locations, with eliminating the caps, and we have had one of those facilities, one of those facilities built. With the bigger issue that we're having is, in my opinion, is the micro business. A micro business essentially operates as a retail facility. And so, because right now we have thirteen permitted facilities, I believe, uh, that would allow for a micro business to be built directly next to an existing facility, so it'd give us to be twenty six facilities if the planning commission is being populated, because of micro business, we never anticipated micro businesses to be as popular as they are.
Um, follow up question, but when we first opted in, micro business had a different set of goals? And we adopted them back in twenty nineteen as with a micro business version, with whatever you're selling, if you run a process inside that facility.
Right.
Um, and at the time, that was one of the ones that could be next to something that wasn't safe, I, we could just make sure that those could not be located next to each other.
Yeah, if we eliminated that buffer, uh, in the best case, like, if you look at the memo, I'll find out what we're going through the audience as well.
Mr. Myers, would you come up?
Yeah.
Also, currently, we have nine operational facilities, two of our social equity permits, and seven pre-existing medical facilities. We have one micro business operating, and then we have three grow facilities. Um, we have two retail facilities under active construction right now, um, one that pulled permits about a week ago, maybe two, um, one that has not pulled any permits, one that received planning commission approval, and has applied for a marijuana permit, but has not pulled any building permits, one retail operation that applied for planning commission approval but had not pulled a marijuana permit with the city, and three micro businesses that have received a permit but have not received planning commission approval. Okay? Uh, so that's kind of the, the landscape of, of the existing facilities and the ones that are still at least in some form of consideration. Uh, for the map attached, there was, and it's actually below, it's on the other side, um, there was seven or six hypothetical new locations, but we thought there was no way that would happen, like I indicated, one of those has been pulled and approved, um, that is the Clux facility. And, uh, um, yeah, we, we never understood, we never anticipated micro businesses to be as popular as they are, as well as the state talking about changing the regulations, allowing micro businesses to not just sell their own products. So that's a whole nother level of something that we had not anticipated. Um, and that has not passed the legislative, but, but has not passed, but it is definitely in the discussion from what we have been told, and I would, I would defer to other people at the state, uh, about the, 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 the potential for that to happen. We've tried to figure out a way, and, and listening to planning commission and listening to city council, planning commission said, how do we stop this? Uh, city council passed a moratorium, so we tried to figure out a way for us to go forward with kind of keeping where we're at and not, not expanding anymore. Um, and there's one way that we have found, we have not vetted this with our lawyer, but it's just an idea that honestly the city manager does not like, I don't love, uh, but it's making the building type of a new marijuana facility be four stories. That be, be four stories. So you would have to build a four-story building in order to do that. We limit things by building type currently, so I don't know why we would not be allowed to do that, but if you built a four-story building that would either offer new residences or, or office or commercial space, then you would be allowed to have a new facility. There are four spaces left, and we'd keep the buffers as, as they stand. Uh, this is not the best way to do it, this is not a recommended planning technique, but it is the only way that we have found that we could potentially stop some of the development and losing some, you know, when, when we talked, I never thought Clux was going to leave, so.
I'm thinking in terms of, and I've discussed it, uh, with councilperson, Will Hough, Will Hough, we've talked about it several times, and is amending the ordinance, unfortunately, the ordinance does not have a limit on micro businesses. Essentially, council could, if they would, go back and set a limit on micro businesses in, uh, in the ordinance. Uh, like I said, I know that, uh, council member, Will Hough, and I talked about it on several pages, and we just never go for to council. Uh, Mr. Simmons, does he have a... Okay, uh, council members then, Summer.
Yeah, uh, I guess my question was also for staff, I think any type that we have, we have a river system for, and even then, whatever we deny, say we allow for three micro businesses, there's a process, if you deny, say six people, five, you deny three, they could appeal those or sue us if we deny the appeal. If they say that, like, our system's unfair or...
I believe that is why council wanted to get rid of the, of the cap system, which is what we've tried to do.
Can we decide not to have a certain type?
No. So from what I have been told, and we can, we can, we can investigate that, uh, but for, for recreational, for medical, we're allowed to opt into certain uses, for recreational, you either accept them all or you accept none. And that's just going on the...
Are you saying that we have to accept every, uh, application for recreational?
We, we have to allow for every use, so if, if the state allows for the use, we have to allow for it.
Mr. Will Hough?
This one to clarify, we did have conversations, but I didn't bring forward the potential to possible, and the, the problem we have to look for, so, and I saved that in this conversation, but we do have their... I was under the impression that, um, when we visited this zone, um, that when this was presented, there was only five sites that were, that priced over the super.
So there is five sites, let's say, well, the, the maps on the back, there are six locations, only one of them has actually applied and been granted. That, this was only for retailer locations, not for micro businesses. And so what, one of the things that we would recommend, the planning commission and the city council, go for is combining retail locations and micro businesses and the distance requirements, so then you can't locate a micro business next to a, um, next to a retail facility.
I have another question about the micros. We currently have one?
One permitted and operation.
We can also set the water for that to a thousand.
It already is.
For the micro, I thought everything was below.
Oh, no, it's all five hundred now.
Yeah, I wonder, yeah, we can increase that to a thousand.
But that would still allow for several new facilities.
It would still make it more difficult. Uh, maybe it could be next to, or you go...
That's why setting all of the boundaries, uh, retail are next to micro, because essentially, even though there is the grow component, which in the past the planning commission had not liked in the tower insight, um, and they actually denied that, that special use application, um, it is a more intense use, um, and so that, and they did not like what they were doing with some of the windows, I, I believe, I, I, I wasn't at that meeting, I'm...
I want to be clear, it wasn't necessarily the use of that, that particular, it was the standard building, the fact that it didn't be, uh, correct or transparency that was basically not in creating, you thought, designed building rather than using, so I can just all over here, so, but this questioning, the, of like, what we're, what Manny and other counselors are going to say, is why would we, why would we ask for this meeting? We have the zoning ordinance, and we have a master plan, and we're trying to balance those, and you are, are representatives to tell us how to make adjustments to this, I mean, this, this very conversation is, for, for, or with staff, but being clear to us where council and citizens are. Do you have any retailers and micro businesses together, creating new, just in that form?
Not with the current operational facilities, but we do have three permits that have been issued that have not gotten special use approval, um, have not applied, one has been trying to apply, and I have to work with our city attorney to see if moratorium's in effect for zoning and chapter seven, or just chapter seven, and that's one thing that I have not had a chance to do, um, and so that, that's on hold for a minute, but all three of the existing micro, uh, the, the, at the very bottom bullet, uh, the three micro businesses have received a permit, but they have, it's all contingent upon planning and zoning approval, which they have not. Uh, the three micro businesses have received a permit, but they have, it's all contingent upon planning and zoning approval, which they have not, and building department, which they have not received. So, we've stopped a lot of things because of the moratorium, and that's why I still have to get some clarification before we accept any permits. Uh, one of them has, and that could create an issue.
One of those three has not.
The one, if, if the one that is asking to apply, does get it, there would be a non-conformity that could.
Anyone else from the planning commission, contact, Mr. Simmons? Please, you get your microphone.
I'm kind of confused as I was, people are kind of eager, just looking at the ears. From the bar saying that a person has a right to, like, what he wants to do. And, uh, so. I don't know if I stick for a whole picture, but I do believe that. All we've been seeing is marijuana, marijuana, marijuana. To the point where God has missions, as he, just really evaluates it, how much is enough? Now, they want to introduce these people. I still don't know what, and it's our, where you're going to put it, how are you going to make it work, and your rules. Us as a mission and make. And for one, seven. I just believe enough is enough. So, whatever comes, that would be. Put in the money as a limit as possible. Of this, they afford to micro businesses, to the retailers. They have processing and clinical, um, facility. And oversee the distribution of marijuana to make sure that it's okay, people off to cover it. For me, enough is enough. Out of that, has we decided that that's going to be one of the, and that, and we need more clarification.
So this planning commission has a recommendation that they want to offer? And regards to what Mr. Simmons said?
Now, the, the issue, the issue that we discussed with the commission, the problem that we're seeing is that the government's, it's the longer it does the maximum. Um, on the marijuana retailers. Um, and so the planning commission has seen a lot of. Acceptable applications for a physical site to be marijuana retailers. We're at a point where it feels like there's over concentration of use with marijuana retailers, and they, I think most of the planning commissioners agree that. That the, that we're at that point where we've reached an over concentration, so we don't have a lot of interest in seeing more of those. The problem that we're having, I think, is the same problem that council has, of not being able to apply or convert without threat of litigation. Is that we don't feel. We don't necessarily, uh, feel the authority to hold the quantity of total marijuana retailers, because we just want to do this last. Right, if we approved marijuana retailer for eight, and marijuana retailer for nine, and marijuana retailer for ten, why not approve a perfect adhesion? For eleven, is that, that, I think, just thirty, ten prior to them, it is the same reason that city council has to have a mission. But if we, I mean, if we keep applying, we keep approving applications that have a good cycle to put together. Then, you know, we're going to continue on this path until we get the habit.
This, if you don't say.
All right, yeah, so, um. Mr. Barr, maybe you could, correctly, if my understanding is wrong here, um, but the planning commission. Also has a responsibility to avoid concentration of use under certain circumstances, right? So I think maybe probably the issue is the balancing act, um, because they don't have the capacity to work. Get that up to their discretion. Because, for me, I, I, I wouldn't mind if it worked. So, one, am I wrong on that? Uh, and then, two, if that's not the case, or if they just. Need something more, uh, concrete. Then what would be, uh, what would the proposal be, Mr. Myers, for? Maybe the, the, so, to plan the micro businesses. Retail. I think maybe the force might have something else there. But it's a nice idea.
Like I said, it was not, uh, the city manager looked at my memo and said, what are you doing? And I said, look, I wanted a discussion starter, I didn't realize it was going to be a discussion stopper. Uh, but it was at least the only thing that we found that we could actually present to you, because the options are limited. I think that just making the buffers with micro and retail the same. Will actually help. Now, I'm not going to lie to you, that that would still allow for up to five more permits. So that would allow, so it was, it was, it was, it was maximum six permits, okay? If you look right now.
So, I have a question.
Yeah, okay, look. So if you look at the map. All of the green areas are places that they could locate a facility. Right now, the only facility that has been located would be the green one off of Michigan app. So that would still allow for potential one, two, three, four, five new permits. Um. Which is an issue. Um, I believe for, at least the planning commission, if not city council as well, so if we, if we made those two. Requirements the same, that would then mean we were at six, now we're at five potential new locations.
So we're adding some marijuana, maybe eight more.
No, was we, we see, the, the planning commission has already given a permit to Skynet. So, so that means that one of locations is off the table now, because it's been buffered out. I, I can.
I just want you to know that, so this is a high school?
Correct.
Okay, and then this is what your, your turn?
Uh, what, what?
Yeah, I don't have my.
No, so that's actually Walgreens and AutoZone. Yes. The Ford dealership isn't in the city.
So like, this is a high school though.
Yes.
So Walgreens across the street, but I'm just like, just for like, a point of reference, like, the other three is the Ford dealership, the township is Walgreens.
Yeah, the one side of the street is the township, and they don't allow.
Like, I just don't see a farm in the area.
And so I, I wouldn't either.
I mean, I say it's fun, but like, honestly, it's also on jobs, it's like.
But, I guess. None of us thought that Clux was going to go out of business.
So, this map is kind of a special retailer.
Yes.
Uh, eligible parcels, it's a, I keep, in, this both is simple sites for micro businesses and retailers.
Because we have one micro business, we haven't created a map for it. Because basically, any of the areas that have these, the, the, that, that are colored, as far as the parcels color, those are allowed to be micro businesses.
So it's more than just potential to green color?
Yes, because we did not anticipate micro businesses to be with that.
And, and as a great deal of micro businesses are not offered.
Correct.
The other thing that we can do is create offers with the all price.
Correct.
We don't want offers with any of the other types, so we should also do that.
And we can run the map and make, and like, and actually bring this back to both.
Like wherever we go to the informing.
It's, it gets, it gets tricky, but we can, we can work out that map.
I, yeah, I, I feel, uh, like, I'm sure, like, I feel like. Right now, definitely, like, I feel, you know, in, in, I mean. Um, particularly around the school, I mean, I guess we got a college, it's like a little three, called two, with lots of concerns about, like, the Beijing. And, and so, um, there's real concerns of kids with access, I know this, you know, some of the things are different, but, um, you know. I don't know, so I, I guess I'm very interested in upper, I would. I, I, I feel relaxed, uh, but that's the.
Mr. Dave, they.
Um, so since the last planning commission meeting, that's a significant staffing changes, but I think one, one idea that I would forward. Uh, what we're pleading was for some staff or attorney of research testing what other states that have already been ahead of the curve. Men, and marijuana legalization, have done with their own, because it's a quite successful situation. So whatever other state has done, what is the pulse of that? That's bringing the Sony food to copy by the place, so why not have the best of these other states? I don't know, I don't think it's a staffing time to do that. I don't know if there's a time, uh, that, the amount of more time, uh, than obviously, hundreds. So, if there's time to do that, I think there are.
So.
I don't know, Mr. Dave, I don't know about other states zoning, but I do know that. Uh, Colorado has encountered problem upon problem upon problem. Uh, since they legalized marijuana. And, uh, even though it's still legal, many, they are, they're wishing that it wasn't because of the problems that it has created for. Um. Yeah, I don't know why, I'm, I am totally agree with, uh. The voices from the planning commission and, um, Councilwoman Simmons. That said, um, enough is enough, I've heard, um. Uh, Mr. Hollyfield, I believe you said you heard the city referred to as Weed City. Uh, I certainly have heard referred to as the marijuana capital of Southeast Michigan. It's not capable at all. Uh, I do think this is something that we really definitely need to look at, and if. We need to, to take it back to zoning, so that the buffers, uh, can be changed. Or if need be, uh, to do whatever we have to do to limit. Uh, I personally feel like we have a doubt, but, uh, Mr. Jones can't, but do your hand, did that for that?
Yes.
Definitely.
Uh, so I did want to go back to that question I had about the discretion of the planning commission. If there is no app, do they have discretion? Because their concentration of use element is part of their.
I would look for a city attorney on that one.
So the question is, I understand it. Does the planning commission have the power to limit the number of marijuana? Uh, establishments in the city, all other things being equal? The answer is no. City council has that authority.
All right, so then we'll go back to the zoning change. So what, uh, to, to Mr. Davis's question, uh, what has? Depending this, uh, maybe visiting, uh, best practices from.
Mr. Matt?
The planning commission does have the authority to recommend the city council.
As far as the research that has been done, Councilmember Jones Chance on staff's end, um. We run, we always run into roadblocks based on the fact that every state zoning laws are so different. Um, and so it's really hard to actually figure out what, what some places do and some don't. Some places can do contract zoning, we're not allowed to in the state, based on the Supreme Court ruling, and so. There's, there's a lot of things that, that are really wrong, we pushed the envelope as we do frequently. Um, and our marijuana permitting back in twenty eleven. And so people have come to us to figure out what's working, and I tell them it's not. Uh, but, um, but it's something that, that, you know, I work really closely with our. Um, Michigan Municipal League Marijuana Law, the, the, the specialty, the lobbyist with the, the marijuana specialist. I work with our, our, our state representatives and, and senate, uh, staff. Um, to try to figure that out, and it's something we can work on, it's just, we, we have a short timeline for a, the moratorium, we could also extend a moratorium. Um, uh, we're going to pass a new moratorium after this one, so, I believe, I'm going to look at this bar.
So, uh, reading the whole, um. So, planning, if they went into an issue where, uh, they're not completely legal, but you can make a recommendation to council. Uh, that's certain, that's not the exclusive. Is that what I'm getting, Mr. Barr, or how, how would that?
Mr. Brad.
Or could that, or could that work on a case-by-case basis at all?
I, I actually, I think I can, might be able to. The, the city council can pass an ordinance that the planning commission runs. Okay, so council's going to have to pass an ordinance, uh, planning commission has discretion of everything except for PUDs. Full discretion, and so there's very little, city council can pass ordinances, and planning commission interprets those ordinances. Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Barr.
Mr. Barr, would you, now, Mr. Jones, Chance, would you repeat your question for Mr. Barr again?
I will try and remember it, um, so, Mr. Barr, you mentioned that, uh, planning commission could make. Um, recommendations to council. Uh, could that be done on a case-by-case basis? So, let's say they got an applicant, and, you know, they weren't sure. Where the discretion lies with respect to, uh, use concentration. Could they make a recommendation to council on an individual, uh, on an individual applicant? Uh, how would that, how would, or could that, would it even help with the process? Uh, it seems clear to me that they just need to make orders, but, you know, they could.
Well, this is a question concerning rights. And so when, when city council makes an ordinance, they affect the rights of people, they say people can do one thing, but not another. And so, if the planning commission gets a situation where the council says, you can't do this. The planning commission cannot say, no, you can't do that. But the planning commission could suggest a city council, they could make a recommendation, for instance, that we think. That you should tighten up the zoning ordinance in these areas because of. We think that there's too much density or something like that. So, but the planning commission does have discretion. If the facts, if the issue is not clear, if you can't tell by looking at the ordinance, that this is a permitted use. Because of certain ideas, certain things, then the planning commission has the power to look at that, make a determination. Is that an answer to your question?
I think, I think so, um. So, we, we should just look at, uh, the code. It doesn't have one already, no.
There is not. Because no one likes my four-story building, so.
So, we have an angry, that models that, it doesn't seem to be average, same. How did they not?
I can look into that, I believe that it is, um, they probably can have the micro businesses be the same as. Retail.
They might not allow.
They have to allow them in some. But they, they just use buffers solely. They use buffers solely, and now every place is buffered out, so they're at max. The problem is we have, with our buffers as they stand, there's still a couple of places where they can be located. I will double check on that.
Uh, Mr. Simmons?
Well. The bottom line is this. For, for me, is that that. As a, as a planning commission. You think, you guys give us the time. It's obvious that there's a problem with that. That's obvious. What we should be trying to learn is solution. What we should be trying to work on is solution as far as how can we, if not stop the period, how can we slow it down or put a limit on, on, how much we need, how much we need. That's the, that's the bottom line for me. So, I call it here, that about the study of other cities, how they survive, how they did that. Those are things that we should be doing that because for on our end, by hand you guys too, there is obviously a problem that needs to be.
Well, Mr. Um, yeah, I think I'd like to make a motion for council to approve some recommendations to get to staff. Um, so, um, I'd like to move that we ask back to work with the planning commission to amend the buffers between all types of facilities so that, um, none of the different facility types can be located next to each other. Um, other than with the exception of social consumption launches. Um, it makes sense for a social consumption launch to be allowed to locate next to a retailer. Um, I'd also like to suggest that in this that we increase the buffer between micro businesses to a thousand feet and probably any of the other types that already are not completely compatible, um, not performing. So I don't think we have a situation right now where we increase the buffer between control and processing to a thousand feet for something to be not performing. Okay, so, um, I'd like to move that we amend the zoning ordinance to, um, provide buffers between different types of facilities with the exception of social consumption launches to retailers. Um, and I'd like to ask to increase all other buffers besides retailers to a thousand feet.
Mr. Wilt, would you repeat that motion, please?
Move, so there was two motions that I. So what I gather is you move to amend the zoning code so that the buffers will be created against all facilities except with that's any consumption monitors and that the micro business buffers will be a thousand feet.
Yeah, that's a fine, uh, all I think, sorry, when I was talking about, I think all the other sites decided to increase it. As long as that wouldn't be a nonperforming.
Mr. Barr.
I don't think it will, but.
Sometimes there can be unintended consequences when the motion starts with a table. I'd recommend that it's agreeable that the motion indicated, who recommended the staff that this be undertaken in a resolution with proper background coming back to council for it, that's great.
I'm happy that's good. I appreciate that. Will you withdraw your motion?
Should I change it to just recommend that instead?
If you would, please.
Okay, I would like to change that to the commission's app.
I will support that.
Thank you both. Um, you heard the motion that, uh, we're going to refer to staff to come back at the resolution. Uh, is there any expression on that motion? Mr. Sweet.
Just for clarification, so is the thousand feet the maximum amount? We can't be wrong with that.
Okay, and the, yeah, it's the.
Uh, explicitly be growing processing not allowed.
I'm sure you can also, yeah, I'll both have expenses for them to gather. Okay.
The, that to be, well, collecting this, yeah, yeah, staff.
Yeah, to be clear, those are not the problems, you're handling by those facilities.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, I'm just thinking it out.
So, and you know, the exception, the exception to, um, the provision of, um, this, if I can use this, would be, um, growing processing, industrial use.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, Chair.
Yeah, so. So means this isn't already written, most of us we can do. Um, I, I feel like where, where staff was going with the four story building and that, uh, making a requirement on physical structure could also possibly. Uh, yes, I don't know, maybe there's some other options there. I think as far as I'm concerned, I think I'm open to anything that may be so long as the, the. Things that we can add. I would be forced to reinforce to be that. I think that's the idea is.
Which paraplegic act. That's not a bigger.
I think, I think that's the other concern with the marijuana retailers and probably part of the reason that a lot of the applicants are turning into. This is that, uh, this business is a lot like refuge and used. It's, it's hot, but it's, it's giving. Uh, it's not as, I don't think it's as profitable as, as it was.
Having so many, the price of cannabis on that bracket.
Yeah, so there's a lot of these businesses that are already. And then we have a lot of empty store lots that are fully empty, so. They've been, what do you use, um, it's, it's not that much tissue to, it's not that much. It's not that much cheaper to make this people. Um, but. Yeah, I think, putting as much into this as possible would be good as much as legal as, I think, whatever.
Hey, I guess, my name is Charles Shear, and I'm a planning commission. And I am a lawyer, sitting here, quiet, and I'm a lawyer. And I respect the time of our assignment. Are you, is your motion to amend the zoning ordinance?
No, my motion, the recommendation is out.
I, I apologize, my age, I have a little age, I have a long experience.
I'm sorry.
That's not your fault, it's my fault. In your amendment, I, any motion to amend the zoning, sort of wait for action.
So she might have heard the motion to do a study.
Well, since you said that, I would, uh, ask the planning commission to, um, bring something back to us that we might amend the ordinance to totally, um, let the state be limited on the micro businesses.
So. Would an update to the ordinance with a cap on the, um, for playing mission of the education, um, the purpose that we were meant to have to be set by council for planning commission to abide.
Yes, but you can make a recommendation to the also that you, uh, planning commission could make a recommendation to council.
Would like us, where the staff follow this motion to, uh, bring you amended, you change the.
Well, whether you work with staff or whether you work within the planning commission to bring that recommendation to make a, uh, to amend the order. Mr. Barr.
This is part of the reason that I asked the motion directed the staff, the staff stack to become investigated, they can set up the process so that there's an orderly fashion and get the proper recipe.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wilt.
So, Mr. Barr, um, is it in the charge that the planning commission to? My, what, if it's that, if there are limits put on the number of, does that probably infer you of? Or is that outside of their charge? Can they change the zones, but can they make a recommendation on the, um, limits of business, correct?
The planning commission, if they decided that there was a situation that council should consider, they have the power to make that recommendation. They can't change anything, but they can ask council to consider.
Second question is, we have a moratorium? And what would be the legal ramifications of making that permanent moratorium beyond the application that are currently in process?
Uh, the law does not allow a permanent moratorium to change the ordinance.
Okay, fair enough. Right, so if we change the ordinance, say, from here on out, we're not taking more applications. The businesses that are there are there, if they fail, they're not going to be replaced without. And this is what we're getting here, right? You know, that's enough, that's, that's how you go down, is to say this is done. Those things that are in process, we have some liability that won't show that. But what you really want to have is the more businesses, right? And so if you just outright say that and say, we're done with the business, we have these things in place to, to regulate the things that are there, but we're not really doing it.
Oh, that's fine. But I'm not sure that is this permission.
It's also, we can't take all.
Well, that's a question.
So, sorry, I don't have. Okay, that was a question for you, Mr. Barr.
Um, what is the question, repeat the question, please?
Question is, can we amend the, the ordinance to stop, uh, any further application? Beyond the ordinance.
Well, I can't give you a complete answer on that. You can amend the ordinance so that you limit the number of opportunities. Um, I'd have to research if you can say to people you can't apply for an opportunity. My initial request, my initial, my initial thought is, no, you can't do that, but you can't limit the actual number.
Mr. Wilt. Yeah, I just want to offer like, so Ann Arbor goes up with zoning as well, and they actually have, they do special exception uses in Ann Arbor. Um, but the way this state law is written, you basically, you decide if you want to have caps, or you decide if you want to go by zoning. You decide to go by zoning, you free yourself from getting, going ahead of every year of doing a root grid system and opening up possible locations. So communities that, I guess, are doing this better, I mean, Ann Arbor, if Ann Arbor were the size of Zalando, people would be saying that they have too many facilities right now. If you drive through Ann Arbor, they're all over the place, just like here, we're just much smaller. So I think like right now, it is kind of overwhelming because we, that's all you guys are doing. Um, the only way, from what I can tell, is zones, other states have written their laws differently. Medical, Michigan's medical law was written much differently, obviously, than the rest law. They did that, you know, I think on purpose because, I don't know, I mean, if you want to play efficient medical, um, when you grew, but there was a lot of litigation then because municipalities were being like overly, um, aggressive and outlawing those types. So when they created and drafted the proposal, they made it in a way so that communities didn't just opt in and zone it in a way that was basically like, we can have one or two and that's it. So it was like intentionally done that way, and I'm not saying it's like, I didn't know the law, but that's kind of what happened. So really zoning to the most aggressive extent is the only way for us to get to a point where we can't take any more applications. Sorry, I just.
No, that's fine.
You know what I feel about.
We're all, you know, reaching towards that same goal, but I just asked a question.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, we got to get there. So I think that there's a more aggressive place for us to get with, like, if we're still, like, I think the bottom line of everybody's not to come to terms with is there will still be a few more facilities, but we can be more aggressive. Yeah, I agree.
Well, do you have anything else from planning or from council? I will just like to say, and I have been, uh, in interacting with other municipalities that have not yet, um, formed their marijuana ordinance, um, I encourage them still to take their time. I think our ordinance, uh, I don't think it was really rushed and pushed through. And I think had we taken time and done some more thinking and weighing what was in the ordinance, I think we might not be faced with these problems or situations right now. But I want to thank the planning commission for all the work that you have done, the work that you continue to do. Um, and we want to encourage you to not give up and just continue to, uh, to, uh, look at the city as your city and what you think would be best for the city. And, uh, continue to, uh, push council if we need pushing in the right direction. So I thank you, I appreciate you for this time speaking. Uh, Mr. Halaika.
Two things about the planning commission, on the agenda, there is a art validation, so you're leaving. Um, also, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I, um, I thought about it as soon as I saw your hand, that we never did vote on the motion. Uh, so it was moved to the second, would you remind us of the motion, Mr. Halaika?
I'm gonna try. So recommend staff examine potential buffers to a thousand feet from all facility types except as a leading consumption uh, for retail with exemption to grow and process. Be referred to staff.
Is that the big motion as you remember?
It's mine, I think.
Yes. And it does, it is your motion, it's a different. Okay, before we vote. It's on it. Do we all hear the same thing? Okay, uh, just want to make sure before we make the vote. Okay, uh, Mr. Halaika, would you call the roll, please?
Will you vote that round?
Yes.
Councilmember Sunnaboe?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilt, actually?
Yes.
Motion carries hands.
All right, thank you. Again, I want to thank, uh, for having more and teaching more and coming out and enjoying the. Uh, next item on the agenda is a special regard and potential relationships with the DDA on how successful the finance is revenue, I think, of a decent question. I'm going to throw off time. Uh, Mr. Um, David, are you going to lead us on this one?
Oh, I don't mind having.
Real quick, the planning commission does have a statement.
All right, I'm here. Mr. Halaika, you were totally out of order.
I can answer any questions that we might have. Mayor, I am available for questions on this, but staff didn't put this on the agenda. I understand it'll be a council topic for discussion. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. This was a, I actually, it was sent as a resolution from the DDA. And I see it's on here at the discussion. Mr. Hulender, you have the, so this was, this was placed on the agenda. You asked to add, provide the resolution. So it's in the act.
All right, well, Mr. French, would you like to come up and share?
Is this working? Can you hear me?
No.
No. How about now? I hope. There we go. And Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong, I know your staff wear multiple hats, but I imagine you can, as the DDA director, can participate in this conversation as well. Excuse me, but this came about because of the parking study that was done in 2018. Since that study was done, we have been working to improve the condition of our parking lots, address the lack of parking, the parking deficit that is, exists, with frankly, no real progress in four years. We actually have fewer parking spots today than we did four years ago. So we've been looking to find some solutions to address some of these things. We've explored a parking structure, which I don't believe that that's a feasible thing, although it would meet our, our needs. It certainly is, is too expensive and, and not something that's going to work, at least not today. So Plan B, and, and we talked about it at the DDA level, and Christopher drafted the resolution, and, and I don't know how many of you have seen it, but we kind of went through the, the history of where we're at, how we got here. The parking lot is not ADA accessible, and it needs a, a, we need a solution. And now the competing priorities, I know with the goal setting, this was one of the things that was brought up and, and wasn't supported at the council level a, as a priority for this year. And so we started talking about what are some other opportunities for us to help address this problem? And that's where the DDA got involved. We have a bonding capacity that we're willing to put in as a solution. And, and a number of the property owners in Deport Town have been meeting. And I know Sally spoke earlier about putting skin in the game. I mean, there's been conversations if needed to do a special assessment within our district. That's how important this is to us, that we have failing infrastructure with no plans to solve it. And so we're, we're working on finding solutions. And what we'd like to do is, is Christopher representing the DDA, as well as some of the other DDA representatives working with the city, to find out a plan that, that meets the needs for the city, for the DDA. Certainly keeps a parking lot open to the public. It keeps parking available to the people using the parks. Make sure we don't violate any DNR grant restrictions, but also find a solution. I mean, that parking lot, and Mayor, you've been here for a very long time. That parking lot is, has been neglected for decades, and it's time. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. I, I would imagine Christopher can help as well.
Thank you. I don't know how many of you have been to the parking lot for the program particularly, but it is dreadful. I mean, it's really, it's beyond even gravel. We generally know gravel. I know there has been lots of controversy around, between the city and Deport Town, about who should take care of parking. And they're going to work together, and then those decisions to work together, they don't always come together. But it's our city, and we need to really look at that parking lot. And if it's the city's parking lot, we need to do something about it. But I don't think it's just the front island. I think that we all know where there is a real problem, and particularly the council people from War Three. That there is a parking, a problem with parking in Deport Town. And it's something that we all have to, you know, to look at. I think as a city, we need to step up and be willing to take some responsibility. I can't say that we can, you know, take all of them responsible. Certainly take responsibility and working with Deport Town and others to take care of the parking, or at least come up with a plan to help solve some of the issues of parking in Deport Town, working with the people and the businesses of Deport Town. Mr. Jones Chan?
I have a question, and, you know, we've got an issue with the, the Cross Street Bridge, obviously, which is in Bonning. Tell us again exactly how many millions that will be out of our pocket. Because we are hopefully getting the whole federal and state funding for that, we'll see, I guess. Just, you know, so that we don't have to close the bridge in traffic where Deport Town doesn't have to make its way, you know, through Forest Street and downtown Rice, which would be worse for those personal businesses and Deport Town myself included. So the, the other issue is, and, you know, and you know, as I said, again, we're in this group, that's a bit of a cheapskate now a little bit. So the issue for me is the bond issue, which is, it seems like the most feasible way to pay for it. And typically for a parking lot, you know, but I think we don't want to bond up on something that's not going to have a useful life that's as long as the bond issue. I think we're going to have a clear on the heart. And I don't, I don't think we want to learn that of our way in Deport Town, because, you know, the funds that flow through the DDA, you know, wouldn't be available for businesses. And since the budgets are still separate, separate, those funds would be tied up for specifically Deport Town businesses. Unless something changes with the way the budget works. And so some of it is just trying to weigh where the businesses are going to get the most benefit. Is it going to be potentially bonding out in a financially less than desirable way to fix a piece of infrastructure that's not going to have a useful life that's as long as the bond issue? Or is there more benefit to the Deport Town businesses and the more perfect grants that are available to the DDA by keeping that, by keeping that top school as possible? So that's, that's part of my concern, is the financial piece and how that's going forward. Is to try and understand maybe what some of the roadblocks defend you, working with the state up to this point to develop a more comprehensive plan. Because that's not the thing that we seem to want to get. So some of the requests here is that something more formal can start it. But I guess I would have questions just to.
And Brian, that's exactly what we're asking for today. Allow the, the city, the DDA representatives to meet and develop a plan that we could present to council. And, and I think you're a hundred percent correct. I think we, and this is before my time on the DDA, but we made a, a bad arrangement with the here-on-street parking lots, and we need to take, take into consideration the useful life. But we can't have a parking lot that isn't ADA accessible. I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it's right behind your business. You know how bad that lot is. I mean, it's, it's in horrible condition. It's been neglected for decades. At, at some point, we have to say we need to invest in our infrastructure. We just can't allow everything to deteriorate. And I think that there's a plan, and we can work together and hopefully present something that council will approve of. And that's what we're asking for.
Maybe, I don't know, not to put, body of reason for on the spot, but what's sort of, you know, bridges possibly will get done only because there's grant funding available for that type of infrastructure? And obviously, that is a, you know, much larger priority. Not, not to say that we have to do money. Basically, in terms of, you know, free money, what would be available for parking at all? How would be?
We could afford debt service of about seventy-five thousand dollars annually with the Deport Town budget. And there are seventeen years remaining to the tip. So that puts us at about one point two seven five million. We're not in a position to do it alone, so we could fix the lot, but we'd never be able to maintain it. We could fix the lot, but we'd never be able to force it, or put lights up, or put heaters in, or do any things that folks might want to do. And so it's going to take a parship, even with every dollar the DDA asks with the city to make anything more.
And then what would be the impact on some of the, particularly the Deport Town businesses in terms of?
There would be effectively no money remaining over the next seventeen years to tip. Do anything else?
Well, may I interrupt? Because we're, we're negotiating in the middle of a private meeting. There's a lot of things that, I don't think this is a fair conversation to begin having at this point. I mean, there's, there's, we do have an issue of, of how much revenue comes into the DDA, but we have a special assessment option. There are opportunities to, I mean, meet with the county. I mean, we're, we're budding up to a park. I mean, there is parks and recs opportunities. I don't think this is the place to begin the negotiation. I think we need to just agree that, let's start having that conversation and working through the details so we can present something to council.
I think they're not negotiating on more kind of understand the multiple facets of the problem. I think it's fair. But I'm certainly open to having a broader, you know, discussion about. I think we do this all the time.
Thank you.
Also, there's somewhere to. I was just going to add another motion by the end of the conversation. Motion to do what? I was just going to ask if we can, I mean, it seems like maybe we go one hour for the conversation? I don't know. Do we want to have negotiations? Okay, because I don't think, I mean, we could talk for an hour circles, but.
Before that, I know our city manager had something to say. Don't you say negotiations? Just want some clarification. Are you saying negotiations between staff and DDA, or negotiations with council and DDA?
Well, the resolution of the class of the DDA says that council can't say negotiations are a big, maybe questionable.
Okay. Because we have been at that with them several times to talk about the condition of the parking lot and the parking in Deport Town. And so we already agreed that there is a need to improve the parking. It's the financials. And we also talked about a few options. And I know we're not going to negotiate here, but it wasn't anything that we decided that could be brought to council, because we never decided on something we agreed on. Like, I thought maybe a lease, they thought they wanted to buy it, you know, those kinds of things. And we did some research to find out that the lot could not be bought, because we received, according to the DNR, we can't sell it. So, you know, we are actually talking about it, and we're not in disagreement that something needs to be done, and that we need to do something together. It's how we do it. And so we did kind of like, talk about maybe a lease option, and about working together, having enforcement. And so this effect is just putting it on paper. You know, you're just saying, keep talking about it. I'm not aware, I don't know if councilors are there. A lot a year ago, Ryan Peterson and Ryan Holston from the DNR came down, and they had some suggestions about improving part of it for use of the park, and then being able to tap into some of those grant funds for the park with improving the lot for people to park there. So that was going to be some grant monies coming in to help with the improvement. But that was turned out, and it wasn't turned out by us. You know, because at that time, they wanted a structure. So I just, I'm saying this to bring you up to speed, that the conversation has not lied dormant for four years. And that we welcome a resolution directing us to continue to work on it. And we're definitely going to work on something that fits, that will be beneficial for both the DDA, the Deport Town merchants, as well as the city. We can't do it ourselves, and we know that the electors will probably not vote to fund a parking structure. So there are lots of options that we can come up with. It's just one that we agree on. Thank you.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yeah, I want to direct staff to, and to, more in-depth conversations with the downtown development authority regarding the Deport Town parking lot. Sorry, wrong, still, wrong.
It's been moved as supportive that this has, this works out, we can create more negotiations through discussions with the DDA regarding program on parking lot.
Mr. Hulender, is there any more discussion happening on the motion? Hey, Mr. Hulender, would you please call the bro?
Councilmember Woggin?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. French and Ms. Ritchie for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the eighth round of votes. Please advise, three.
Yes, our next meeting will be October twenty-seventh. Any relations will not be meeting until this forum. Our commission? Parks and Rec?
Oh, Disney. Public and I'll do it. Parks and Rec is going to be submitted, we're working on some nominations for some, and parks, Michigan Recreation and Park Association awards in the next month here. And then also the senior centers potentially working on receiving some funding that may allow them to expand hours and increase staff as well, too.
Thank you. This you will have, sustainability?
Sustainability, welcome to new members. It missed me last month, and then two new members who were expected to be, and went back from the chat. Some of the goals that had been not fully developed and passed over, it's a great discussion. Shared with the members and an active discussion. I have to say that the body of rule. Part of that discussion, there's a, how many plans that actually, plan that's been placed and there's a number of public needs for the next three days. So I'm going to go to the county side and head out and then pick.
Thank you very much. Historic, this is. Planning commission, we just had a.
Planning commission has met today. And just, I haven't been in your fields.
Okay.
Since the last.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, Simco, I think Simco had its general assembly last, uh, last Thursday. Uh, had a really good, um, session. And just to remind everybody, uh, Simco's general assemblies are open every month. And, uh, it's only their executive committee that, uh, uh, that are closed, they are even closed, they're open, that they do have, but not public. Um, yeah. Then I've been, and I'm, I was ordered the, um, invitations to do webinars, but they got some very good webinars that are coming up. And if you do not receive the Simco, uh, emails with the webinar, please let me know, I will send them to you. But there are, and, uh, there's some very good ones that are coming out that are some that I hope to stay and hopefully take, take advantage of. Okay, Washington area transportation study. Urban Howling.
Urban Howling meeting was canceled last, uh, in October and the next meeting will be first Monday.
All right, thank you. Uh, the DDA.
Yeah, we have a meeting Thursday to finalize the applications for the match on the grant program. We're doing a couple of holiday sponsor.
All right, thank you. Uh, Russell Cool.
Uh, they have a meeting tomorrow, which I would miss, but I have. Right? So I haven't been updated.
The vice. Meeting. One word. If that's in the last meeting, so now, okay, thank you. All right, uh, that's to council proposed business and I'll start here with, uh, Eric Bojman.
Oh, thank you. Um, so not much, but I just want to just make comment on, um, our public comment from earlier this evening. I think that, uh, the, the individuals who spoke to us was just really telling about why some of the companies that have a black hat. Um, as well as just probably really around child acquisition, retention, our police department is really important and has to be like the most important as we look for our police chief. But also just attracting and retaining talent in the city. Um, it's really concerning to me, um, what I heard from Ms. Hardy about her son and also from Detective Cocke and just like, um, you know, the idea that because of our low numbers that we don't have, we have to make tough decisions around a review from the detective bureau, which I think is not, not the course of action that I would, um, recommend, but not being a police professional or anyone in law enforcement. I, that's why I'm asking additional questions so I understand the process, you know, when we are below numbers because closest of justice, it's a closure, um, and then to do the support that, um, I made my use of we, you know, be a champion for this, you know? Everybody else, I stand on my social workers, it's, um, so much often, but just making sure we prioritize that as we are moving forward. Because though we know there are issues in policing, I think that when we look at the detective bureau and the work that's being done and the support that's necessary, we have to make sure we prioritize it. Not only for, you know, the department, but for our community members, um, for, you know, city citizens. So hopefully we can kind of get a better understanding of what's happening in the department as well as getting some commentary from, you know, the, the, or the faculty chief, you guys, uh, to understand what's happening.
Thank you. This is Jones Chan.
Actually, I want to, um, I want to thank those who gave, uh, public comments around that issue as well. Um, I, I think this is one of the reasons why public safety is not a place for high levels. Um, we, we have to take all the good ideas that we can, uh, to find a way to make this work. Um, you know, it's not, it's not as black and white as yes, more police, no, no. Um, and those comments are proof as to why that's an issue and why the numbers can add to the culture issue. Um, that the low staffing is going to be to tough decisions and those kinds of decisions are one hundred percent guaranteed to cause issues. And the collateral damage of those issues are the people who's are the families and the victims who are on the other side of those cases that need resolution. And like, uh, like Mrs. Brown said, I can't, you know, I can't really say whether that's the way it's all, but feels wrong from what I've heard today. Um, but I'm in this. Um, but this, this low staffing is a, it's causing a lot of fault and we've got to get under control quickly because people are dying, literally dying because we have not figured this out. And it's not okay. Um, so I want to thank all the folks who gave comment. Um, I know it's, it's not easy to do. Um, and I, I think it's being courageous about that and for confronting us about it. Uh, we, we will get this figured.
Does anyone else have any comments about the comments of the always spoken death about police? Cause the two, we had two people, I imagine will talk about it now.
Okay, that's, I mean, it's just a critical, um, thing that we have to figure out in our crisis mode. And, uh, you know, obviously this is impacting people in many ways and, um, he, as a former police officer, you know, I understand what, right? You're making difficult decisions, staffing, because you have to have them staffing on the road. We can't necessarily be, uh, you know, wearing road officers down either, so we got, we can see where we can get the week, but, you know, we're just at a critical juncture here because, um, pulling them from the TV, um, is, is, you know, it's dumb, it's like, um, here's like. Um, so, yeah, and I, I know that there's efforts being placed on this, city manager, I know it's, um, recently, you know, there's some, it's like maybe a potential funding from a state and that's good. And I also know because I'm a major professional now, you know, that this is tough stuff. So, you know, and then there's a leasing deficit, you know, hiring that's funding everywhere. Um, but we live in this community, right? And we, you know, help manage, be responsible to our citizens, so somehow we gotta find a way. Um, yeah, it's, I don't know, it's, you know, um, my heart is about your, you know, family, such as the one that you spoke today and I'm sorry for your loss and, um, right, it's hard when it's kind of exacerbated by, um, frustrations of not being able to get the, you know, support, um, to get justice. Yeah, it, it just, to me, it's like kind of, I remember a lot of things was made out for, for all kinds of things. So, yeah.
Anyone else?
I think the other piece of it that listening to both my colleagues just these, also like the unintended harm and consequences that come from having to make difficult decisions like these. And so there are a lot of folks who talk about like the unintended consequences of additional police and even police reform. But these are also examples of real life, real lives, right? Whether it's unintended harm happening when we're talking about, um, not wanting to, to, to fund or support, making sure we find the people to do this work. And so it is, you know, my favorite line is a both and, you have to, you know, find a form and make change. But we also have to remember that there are also unintended consequences on the other side of it as well. Um, and these are real lives that we're talking about.
Yes. This is so proud about this. I want to share with those that spoke tonight, um, that I appreciate you coming. Could you use your microphone?
I appreciate you coming tonight and sharing with us, um, your position and your frustration. I want you to know that we're listening and that we're not ignoring, um, the fact that we have a shortage and as a con- as consequence, there are things that are being delayed. But I want you to know that we're doing the best that we can to get, um, new officers. As a matter of fact, we have a new officer, um, that we just hired and it's not, um, an amateur, amateur or a newbie. They come from another police department, which is a good thing because they'll get the other one in, um, a little bit faster than the normal. Um, it is true that it is possible that there will be, um, officers taken from the, uh, detective bureau to the other road. Because we're now down twenty-four officers, another one left and took another job. So according to, um, you know, the police orders under, if we are not able to do the minimum staffing, um, an emergency order can be, uh, placed where officers from other units are taken and put out on the road. Um, if this does happen, it's not, um, it's just a temporary, it's a temporary, um, thing that's happening until we can do more staffing. We are posting, as I said before, some civilian positions to take on some of the, uh, administrative duties that some of the command staff are doing to allow them to go on the road. So this is a hard thing for all of us and it's going to take a little bit of time. Uh, we plan to tap into the funds that were just approved by the governor, um, that will invest in, um, prospective officers, those that would like to be officers. And so this is because she recognizes that this is a problem across the city. So, um, it's not just, it's a landing, but we are paying attention and we are doing the things that we can do right now to try to, uh, keep our community safe as possible. So I want to share that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know the, the thing that, uh, will you teach more?
Yeah, we do.
No.
I think we've all kind of talked about it, right? But, um, and, you know, getting a focus on recruitment and retention in IP and something like across the whole board of city staff seems to be very important. Um, I think this, um, you know, you may contract a good group tonight and from offering some more incentives and things behind that to, to afford people that may not have those opportunities elsewhere. It's important to, to remember going forward, too. Um, and I also want to thank, um, Detective Cocke for, you know, your dedicated service. Clearly you're picking for a reason and you've, you know, proven and very dedicated to the department and the residents here. Um, and that shows through what you're smoking about and your track record and so. I know that, I appreciate that and everyone, it's just, they appreciate it too, so.
Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, I'm. And what people need for tonight, I think, not this calls much more. You know, the, the cultural, uh, issues within our department have been a long time coming. And we really need to be creative about how we're going to go about not having that happen. Um, you know, we have, we have funding that has been approved for some time to be able to staff and ensure, you know, the enough. But I think part of this is, is the culture that's been cultivated within the department, it needs to be ratified.
You know, I also want to say, it's not just the department, but it's also our community, right? Our, we are a community that, you know, right, I'm just saying that, you know, if, if we're a community that, that projects that we don't want police here, that we, you know, that we're bad or whatever, you know, why would we? So I'm just saying part of it is, are we, you know, are we a, a community that's willing to partner and welcome, you know, a set of employees to come to a really hard job? And I think that's part of it, too.
This is the one.
Yeah. I just have to tell you, thank you for coming. I know that was probably difficult to, um, do and also to the family, um, thank you for coming and sitting through this whole meeting. Um, I'm sorry that we don't have, um, the man's solutions, um, to address your problem statewide and countrywide. I'm getting officers as we've had the free, um, well, we've tried increasing, um, our force and that's not been super successful, but, um, I was, you know, when we got that email earlier today about just the state, um, grant opportunities to recruit, um, I'm hopeful, um, hopefully the city will be able to get some of those benefits, um, and like wearing my other hat and my coat and stuff. If I, if our office can be hopeful and, um, hoping staff and the department have the experience, we will, um, sometimes clarify questions and help get things, um, and refer. So, um, I do think it's important for us to take advantage of our outside resources. Thank you again, and, you know, it's not easy to keep city policy meetings, so, um, I appreciate you all for being here.
I want to thank Detective Cockling for coming and, um, being brave enough to stand up enough to come and to share. I didn't hear her so much talk about the size for the lack of officers in the department. What I did hear from her was the officers removed from the detective bureau in retaliation for a stance that she took. I heard her say that she filed a grievance and that she was told before she filed the grievance that by the interim chief, that if she filed the grievance, this is what you want to do. This is what's going to happen. If you file a grievance, then I will remove the detectives that are in the detective bureau with you. Yes, we all know that we, our department is small. I have been here when we had, uh, when there were times that we had one officer on duty.
Yes, yes, yes.
And we lived through it. We will live through having a small department and it will increase. But right now, the big problem is, is that this was a retaliation for her taking a stance against something that was wrongly done, uh, uh, a move that was wrongly executed by the interim, uh, police chief. So I think we need to focus on what the real issue is. So we need to issue focus on the workings within the department that we have. Why? Yes, we need new police, but who's going to come, want to come here when there is trouble within the department itself? So I think that's what we need to look at. And I think, uh, City Manager, I'm going to ask you to please follow up with Detective Cockling and follow up on that report of retaliation. We can't have, we can't have that. If we have, if that becomes the standard, then we never will have a full police department.
That's right, so.
Anyone else? Detective Cockling, if you would submit that to me?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay, and so then we could go ahead and we could read the demo.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Uh, yes, Mr. Wolf, after you were next for council proposed. None of this, thank you. Nothing? Okay, Ms. Summerville.
I think the only thing I have, um, both Evan and I were dealing with, uh, issues on the border last month, um, with the dogs, uh, on River Street. Um, Mr. Bar, have you heard anything else about that?
I'm sorry, Shady.
So Evan and I were dealing with the dog issue on River Street, the resident just outside of the city, um, who has some problems with shit from the town. Okay, um, so, yeah, it's confusing because I don't really think other than having the prosecutor's office. I was going to be clear, like, really, the prosecutor's office is the only one that can do anything about this. I was gonna be clear, like, really the prosecutor's office is the only one that can do anything about this? Okay, and they have it, so I won't, yeah, to answer your question.
They do have it.
They have it. No, I can follow up with them. So, okay, they have it all. It's an unfortunate situation.
After the fence, if there's a fence, it was supposedly electric fence, but. Mr. Sweet.
I think I've had a worry to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Okay, from the, from the mayor, I have received, oh gosh, any number of calls about several different issues. And I will relay those to the, to the city manager. I will, Mr. Rajabi stepped up quite wound up tonight and that I had not returned. I have returned or called Mr. Rajabi on many occasions. I did, the last time I called, well, the last meeting I called after the last meeting I called, but I did not reach him. But before that, I had directed Mr. Rajabi to the county who would be able to help him with the, I think it was the starter or something to do with his hot water heater. However, when they gave him a call back, he was not satisfied with what they wanted, what they were offering because he, it was what he needed, but in the meantime, he refused it. So therefore, his water tank was not certified. I will reach out to him and again, I think that, I know he's a difficult resident, but when we take on the job of city council, I think we take on the job of pleasant residents and also difficult residents. We cannot differentiate. So, Mr. Barr.
Since Mr. Rajabi didn't mention my name, I'd like to report to council that I did agree to see him and spent perhaps an hour and a half talking to him about the different issues, made some recognition. But Mr. Rajabi was not happy with my recognition.
I totally understand. I totally understand. So, but I would try to reach out to him and let him know that from myself, certainly not aware of discrimination. That is one thing that I truly worked very hard to do, is not discriminate against anyone because of their color, their origin, or their choice of gender, or their status, anything whatsoever. I, I worked very hard at that and have always worked very hard. So I will not, I will reach out to him and try to see what we can do if he will allow me to try to help to get him a permit into, we go, in his house. Evidently, that's what he's saying now is that the permit is not working. And I do know that the county has needs to help particularly seniors with, with her. So, you know, they will, they'll put a permit in place. So I will reach out to him to my house. I'll be leaving early, early in the morning for the convention. However, I will reach out to him sometime. That's pretty much it that I have. Communications from the City Manager. I very much appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Well, nothing publicly commented over again. If anyone would like to speak, you can come to the council, come to the microphone, introduce, give your name, and we have three minutes. Detective Cocklin.
Thank you. Staffing is a problem at our department. But the change in the detective bureau, they took off, he took Officer Lewandowski out because he placed a command officer in there that has about four years' experience. Lewandowski, Detective Lewandowski and I are knee-deep in these cases, homicide cases, all the ones that I described before. So to me, what is the reason? Why are you pulling him out? And you're replacing, putting a command officer in there, it's Sergeant Laurie, she doesn't even agree with it. I talked to her today. She doesn't even agree with it herself. Because if you pull Officer Detective Lewandowski out of there, you can't just hand his cases and this knowledge of what he's working on to someone else. Interim Chief Yucus has never been in the detective bureau. He does not have detective bureau experience. It's totally different. He's never run a case on a homicide from the beginning all the way to the end. When you get someone in custody, that is when your work starts. Like I had a prelim today, like the, and he was a supervisor of the detective bureau, right? So when we had that little girl, autistic girl, almost non-verbal, getting kidnapped from our city, she was taken, repeatedly raped, I got DNA back in her oral, vaginal, and anal swabs. How many officers or detectives did he call in to work that case? One. If your daughter was abducted, how many officers do you want working on that case? That's a bad call. That's, that's a very bad call. Sergeant, he should have come in on it. There's officers that care enough that would come in. You don't have, I worked on that case three days straight by myself. This, the community does not deserve that at all. If that was my child, I'd be upset. It's not even my child and I'm upset. Then we get another case where there's a shooting, two cars are impounded. Officer Lewandowski has a gunshot victim at the hospital, two cars to do impound on because there's guns involved. And one of the gentlemen comes up, I want my car back. Well, you can't have it. We're seizing it because we have to do a search warrant on it to see if there's anything in it. Will you give us consent? No. Says, I'm sorry, can't have your vehicle back. Interim Chief Yucus says, just give him his car back. Who cares? It's less paperwork. We found Officer Lewandowski, he says, oh, are you telling me, are you ordering me to give his car back without searching it, without doing a search warrant? Oh, no, I'm not telling you that. Officer Lewandowski did the correct thing. I trained him. He says, you can't have your car back. He did a search warrant, he got a loaded gun, pills, crack cocaine, all kinds of evidence out of his car. That's not what, that's not leadership for the, for the department or the detective bureau.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I understand what I heard earlier.
Ms. Carrie, please speak.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Is it on?
It may not be on because I'm like right up on this side. I understand what I heard earlier. Thank you, council members, for your kind words. I said, thank you for your kind words that you said earlier. I do still have questions and concerns regarding sending an emergency order to remove detectives or detective bureau to put on the, on the street. We can take someone like Detective Lou or Lewowski, as she says, I call him Detective Lou, who has the seasoned years and experience and been working in the middle of my son's case. So now he was supposed to go to court on Thursday, this Thursday. For two of the people that they apprehended, these people, and he's still working on the other four, I wanna remind you of that. He's still working on the other four that they know are involved in this process. They stabbed my son over a hundred times. And now the man that has been working on this case, do you wanna pull him and pull him to the street to patrol the streets when he's a detective and he's doing his job the right way? He's very proficient at his job. I haven't trusted my son's case in two years' care. I expect, and y'all say that you're a good detective, sir, that's what you're gonna do. I understand you may only have two or four officers. But removing your detectives to put them out on the streets, I don't think that is fair to the families nor, on the flip side of the coin, the people who are sitting in jail and truly waiting for their sentencing trial. You are hindering due justice by getting toward that. Evidence can only be presented if they have somebody who collected it to come in there and be able to speak about it. So for me to have a conversation last night with a prosecutor that tells me she's been preparing Lou to come to court on Thursday and be able to be a witness for the prosecution and has to tell me, hopefully, he'll be able to still come because he's been removed. So she may have to flip and have Detective Annette because she tells me if Lou can't come and he's been removed and he's supposed to go on the road, then she can't present evidence that Lou was the one in the process. You are hindering people's lives and their cases. So I understand you have to make decisions based on the staff that you have and the budget you have to get more people. But you also can look and see if there's another way to do this without removing Detective Lou and the other seasoned detectives that have been working the cases, who have ongoing cases that weren't going out of that department and putting them on the streets. I'm just imploing you to see if there's another recourse. Can you put a stay in it until you see if there's something else you can do?
Thank you, thank you, Carrie. Is there anyone else? Mr. Tucey?
That's a mother speaking. Son is deceased. Stabbed over a hundred times. Two in jail. And there's still some on the run. And then you wanna pull a detective out of the department that's familiar with the case. Walker has stated that, I heard that she stated that it's not a good idea for the lieutenant to do this. I'm gonna tell y'all what's happening here. Retaliation. Retaliation. Retaliation is what's happening here. He wants to do everything that he can possibly do to bring her character down. I'm talking about Detective Cocklin. He wants to do everything that he can do to punish her and make her job even tougher than it is. Lewandowski needs to stay in the detective department. If you need somebody on the road, put the lieutenant out there. Put some of your lazy sergeants out there. Do something to improvise. Don't take people away that's familiar with what's happening. Y'all have heard it, it's retaliation. Officer Cocklin has been retaliated against for years. And this could have been nipped in the bud a long time ago. Now, Mr. Barr and I, we've been around this table longer than any of you. We've seen policemen go and we've seen policemen come. Those policemen that went was not policemen, that was tired of police work. They were sick of funky administration and they left. And they went someplace else to work. That's what's happening in the YPD right now. I would love for the lieutenant to get the message in the morning. You will not no longer retaliate against Detective Cocklin for what she's doing because you know you are guilty for doing what you did. And you made it very plain, Yucus, that if she did the grievance, you was not gonna like what he was gonna do. And he was gonna pull the detectives out. Make sure. See, lawsuits, y'all, listen to me, I'm gonna tell y'all, I, you know, lawsuits is out there. And it can happen if these kinda things continue to happen in the city of Ypsilanti. So far as protecting, I'm, I'm, I'm through, Sister Risha, protecting the community and the safety of the community.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that could speak? Brown.
So just to answer your question, if those were my children, I would want every police officer in the city of Ypsilanti to investigate that case. Those are children, our children, and I understand deficits. I understand that we're dealing with staffing crisis. I am, I'm an employer. Okay? People's life matter, justice matter. And there are days that we don't have enough staff. I gotta get in there and do what I can to help the process. So it's not okay to allow this lady here, who's suffering the loss of her son, to accept someone telling her that, oh, your investigation has to be put on hold because we need you in the community. All of this stuff that's going around, defund the police, this is what happens. We can't have that because right now, we're already defunded. We don't have enough police officers. And so when mothers come out to counsel crying, it rips my heart because I'm a mother. And if any one of my kids were violated, I want every police officer in Ypsilanti to investigate and bring me closure for what I'm dealing with. Because it's not an easy thing when you can't sleep at night because you're overwhelmed in tears and grief and sorrow because your child is no longer here. So it's not enough for us to sit back and think that it's okay because we don't have enough police officers, that it's okay for an investigation to not, this woman to not have closure brought to her and she cannot have some peace, she cannot have rest. It's not okay to wake up with bags under your eye because you're crying day and night because your son was stabbed to death, somebody else's child was raped, okay? And assaulted in such a crazy, this, I cannot even think. Because if it was my daughter, I'm sorry, this is not okay. People's lives matter, justice matter, and we have to find ways to make this happen collectively. Come together, think about what we can do. If it means that the acting chief has to jump in a car and do community policing while he leaves whoever is there to continue to help this woman solve crimes, that's what has to be done because as an employer, I do it. I do it regularly and he is not exempt.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Anyone on my, like, comment, please raise your hand? Okay, stay none. Maybe it will be a joke.